April 27, regular session.
Very good. Let's call this regular meeting of the Marion County Board of Supervisors to order a big day ahead of us. Mr. Grandia, full call please.
Keisha Johnner?
Here.
Mark Ramey?
Here.
Steve McCombs?
Here.
Would entertain a motion to approve this morning's agenda?
Motion we approve today's agenda?
Second.
Like to make one amendment before we approve the agenda, and that is items six and seven. Want to amend the not to exceed language to 11 million. To 11 million. I did some math, and we'll talk about that during our hearing those items specifically. This doesn't approve those items, this just changes the agenda to reflect those changes.
So I make a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Correct.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Very good. Amended agenda is approved. Jake, any communications received by your office?
Not that I'm aware of.
Good, thank you. Public comments, this is the portion of our agenda the public can speak on items not on this morning's agenda. The board cannot act on those items. Carla, I gotta go through the whole thing. They could be topics for future Board of Supervisor meetings. Carla?
Yes, I wanted to update you on the regional broadband study. There have been, over the 11 county area, 3,756 surveys done by residents, and Marion County has had 624 of those surveys, which we have the second most of any county of that 11 county area. The survey is still open until May 14th. We have obviously 13,000 households that potentially could take that, so we're still continuing to work even though we're ahead of many of the other counties, continuing to work and offer that to folks to make sure that people have taken the broadband study. On the business side for the business survey, there has been a total of 345 businesses in the 11 county area take it. Marion County has 52 businesses, which puts us in first place of all counties, but again, we have 1,000 businesses and nonprofits and employers in the county. So just really trying to ask people between now and May 14th to take the regional broadband study so that we have the data. What people don't understand is that part of the survey is a speed test, and that speed test provides us real data that we need to move forward with broadband, so...
Carla, is there something that a business or resident, who can they contact?
They can contact myself, I can get them in connection with it. Or it's just really simple, if you go to Google and you Google "central Iowa broadband study," you'll get, it'll come right up.
Okay.
So either way, we have a flyer about it, it's on our website on MarionCountyIowa.com. One of the header pages has the link to this information as well.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that update, appreciate it.
I appreciate that, Carla.
Any other public comments, items not on this morning's agenda? Now you seeing anything online? No. Very good. Would entertain a motion on this morning's consent agenda?
Motion we approve today's consent agenda?
Second.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Very good, on the business. And we have a lot of business. Some very exciting things happening here in Marion County. First item is declare the public hearing open, and it is a review of a proposed urban renewal plan for Marion County VA campus urban renewal area. And it obviously is located at the VA campus here in Marion County. Board, you have it in your packet, listed as agenda item number one. Jake, maybe a quick thumbnail sketch?
I can sure try.
I can sure fill in the blanks for this.
This is allowing the county to create an urban renewal area, which allows the plan, which gives the county the authority to issue bonds for the project. So this isn't tax increment finance or anything like that, this is creating the authority to create the bonds, I believe. It's quite a step process for setting the date for the public hearing, a public hearing. Marion County zoning had to meet and review this and see if it fit within their plans, and they've done that. There was a consultation available to the city and the school to comment on it, and there were no comments received for that as well. The report for that is included in this packet as well. So, yeah, there's no comments from that consultation. The Marion County zoning agreed that it fit within the county's plan, and those are all included in your, in the documentation as well. So it encompasses the whole, the legal descriptions you can see is lengthy, it encompasses the entire VA campus process. And also included in this would be an agreement with the city of Knoxville that they previously approved, allowing the county to create the urban renewal area within the city, I believe. Is that right, Brett?
That is correct.
So the city of Knoxville has agreed to that agreement as well, and this will, this is the public hearing for you, the county, to create this urban renewal area.
Very good. Thank you, Jake, for that explanation. Yeah, this is the first step in our several processes that we have to do today from a legal perspective as we work toward the beginning of the VA demolition project. Our thanks again to the city of Knoxville, Mayor Hatch, City Council, in working with us on this. Are there any public comments, this is the public hearing portion, on this plan? Hearing done. Would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Very good. Item number two is the resolution 2021-45, and this is the urban renewal plan approval for the Board of Supervisors. Now that we've had the public hearing and the explanation from Jake as to why we are doing this, is there discussion from the Board of Supervisors?
No, I think, I think we've discussed this at length several times, and I think everybody's aware of why the process has to take place. I'm assuming everybody's aware, I haven't heard any negative, so...
No, I don't have anything, I'm just looking at it and just double checking.
Nope, nope, it's good, it's good. It's a big document, this is a complex process. As Jake alluded to, this gives us the ability to authorize financing and to do it in a very particular way as we work through that financing process. We had an excellent event this Saturday out at the VA, well attended. Again, my thanks to Mayor Hatch for emceeing and to Anna and Kevin for putting it on, organizing. Did an excellent job. But I think the community got to see one last time why this definition that we have for the VA fits as a blighted area. It's not a salvageable area any longer. It's an area that needs to be torn down, respecting the history of it, but moving forward with it, so... Board, if there are no further questions, or it's to Steve?
I would like to thank Chris for his, and according, I just got a text from Dylan Morris from the city of Knoxville, saying what a phenomenal job Chris did on the VA walking tour of Saturday, during Saturday, so thank you, Chris, for doing that. I think, I think you answered a lot of questions that people had during that tour, so according to Dylan, it was an excellent job.
If there are no further discussion or questions, I would entertain a motion on resolution 2021-45.
Motion to approve resolution 2021-45.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Next, we have a series of three, four, and five. We'll start with the public hearing on the VA campus demolition project documents. So this goes to the bidding process and the contractors that we had bid on this project. And this is the public hearing portion of this to review those bids. So Dana?
Yes.
From Ethos, who has helped us tremendously through this process. I don't know, Chris, if you're joining in on this or not, or, all right, is this all Dan?
If you guys have questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
All right, very good, thank you. Dana, if you could just walk us through the spreadsheet and what we have in front of us?
Yes, on April 15th, we received bids from eight qualified contractors. We were very happy with the outcome and the number of people who were able to submit qualifications, because we did require pre-qualification process, so having eight bids is a really good number for us. We, the low bidder was Veet and Company. Their base bid was $6,659,301. If you recall from the last time I was here, we also had alternates identified on this project. So add alternate one was for the demolition of building 173, which I believe you guys refer to as the education building. And that was just to give the county flexibility in deciding whether or not they wanted to proceed with maintaining that building or demolishing it. So we have a number of $17,000 for that alternate. The alternate number two was for crushing a certain portion of the existing concrete onsite and leaving it onsite for the county to use in projects that they have moving forward. The additional cost of that is $52,000, so those are both options to add to the base bid contract amount for the county to decide on.
Yeah, I'd like to make it perfectly clear to any public that's listening that the education building, the alternate, just mean, that is just exactly what you said, that gives us the option to see if it fits into the overall plan in the future, so...
Well, Stephen, that is going to be demolished. Yeah, Steve, I think that's a great point, and Dana and Chris, maybe you could highlight the three buildings, or three or four buildings we are reserving right now on campus.
Sure, so currently, as is the laundry facility, boiler plant, and then the add alternate, which would be the education center of the buildings that are scheduled to stay. The reason we left the alternate in and didn't just outright say we're going to leave the education center, previous discussions with the board, with Ethos, and with Confluence, was how does that going to overall impact the concept that we move forward with for redevelopment? If, it's a good enough building that if we can incorporate it in the concept, it'd be a very easy building to keep with minimal input to, I'd say redesign interior layouts to add everything that we need to from a utility perspective. That's still going to be a tremendous cost, because as everybody knows and is aware, it's a self-contained site, and where it's located, we're going to have to look at, not only can we use the building, but when we run infrastructure into the Confluence plan as the city moves forward with it with the county, is how are we going to get utilities to that building? And how is it going to, you know, impact that Confluence plan? So at the end of the day, if we can incorporate it, it'd be a great building to save. If we can't, it's a very nominal cost at 17,000 habitating down. But the VA laundry facility and boiler plant are scheduled to stay permanently.
Chris, I've got a question for you on the boiler plant?
Yep.
Somebody asked me why we were keeping it. Is that to help because the laundry facility is connected to the boiler plant?
No, no, so from an architectural perspective, we got to think in terms of how easy can you hook things back up?
Okay.
That has to be at the forefront of our process and anything we want to say about there. So laundry facility, the Mid-American connection and water connection are very close to where that laundry facility is. Because that's there, that boiler plant not being connected but being very close proximity to the laundry facility lends itself to be hooked back up and incorporated in the, I guess, infrastructure plan fairly easily. Nothing's going to be easy out there, but when you compare it to the rest of the buildings, fairly easy. The architecture of that building, it's one of the older buildings on campus, it's an amazing shape structurally. Yes, there's a lot of gutting, so if you were to walk in it, you'd go, why the heck would we keep this? But if you look past what you see physically sitting in there, it could be an amazing commercial destination spot for the city of Knoxville.
I think it lends itself very well to where it's located for commercial development, because that's, because that's the way the plan is set up.
Yeah, and it fits perfectly with the concept that the county and the city have agreed on.
Thank you for that explanation.
Question? Very good.
I'd like to clarify one thing on the alternates. The county will need to decide as they sign contracts which alternates are going to be a part of the contract. At that point, the contractor is not required to maintain this number that they've provided as an alternate throughout, so if you change your mind later, they're not required to maintain this number throughout construction.
That was good, I was going to ask that question.
Yes. Bids are only required to be held for 30 days after the bids are received. However, it does give you a good idea if you do decide later to proceed with something differently, approximately what the number would be, and at that time you could ask them for a new proposal for that.
Right, all right. So let's make sure we can be staying good order here, we're still in the public hearing portion of this. Are there any other public comments, and then we can have further board discussion on items four and five on plan? Now you seeing anything online? Very good. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Very good. Now we get into the, again, we had some of that discussion, good questions, good discussion. Dana, excellent clarification, so let me be, I want to make sure I'm clear on this. At the time of contract signing, we have to decide for, do we want the alternates included in the cost?
That is correct.
Correct. So for the board, for you to understand the process, and for everybody who's listening in, today as we decide on which bid we will select, that bid will be selected subject to financing approval. That financing approval is a two-step process that begins today and it will end on May 12th.
11, sorry. Our next board meeting is the 11th.
For the 11th. And we will final approve that financing on May 11th. We will sign contracts shortly thereafter. Dana has told me that has to be signed by the 15th, am I right, Dana?
That's correct.
So at that meeting on the 11th, board, we need to decide on those alternates, and do we want to keep those in or not. I think we probably need to have some consultations with the city?
Correct.
As well, to discuss that during this two-week period and see what their thoughts are as well on those alternate costs.
Can you explain to me alternate two again?
Yes, the county requested a cost for the contractor to crush some of the existing concrete that is onsite and leave it there for county use on future county projects.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear.
Good. So Dana, from a, from a legal perspective, the requirement of the board is to select the bid based on what legal standard?
The county should be selecting the lowest responsible bidder.
And when we did our due diligence on, obviously the lowest bidder is, is it Veet?
Yes.
Am I going to say that right?
Yes.
So is Veet and Company due diligence? We checked references. Chris, Dana?
Yes, so I contacted the three references they listed along with nine additional. I just looked online at job sites they had participated in or had sold contract on. All 12 conversations were amazing. Joe was able to listen in on a couple of free they listed. I had to chase these people off, because they wanted to talk about how much they enjoyed working with this company. One of them was Central Pacific Railroad, who exclusively uses them. They use them for the last decade. They're responsive, the way they deal with the public nature of railroads, and especially as they run through towns and things of that nature, they're excellent with the public. They were talking, they had a rail bridge washout somewhere north of Dubuque. They showed up the next day, and 12 days later, they had rail traffic crossing that bridge. So everything that I can tell is this is an outstanding company, family-owned, 1902, third-generation family, is now CEO of the company, 600-plus employees, 125 excavators, this is all online stuff you can find.
Sure.
I think it's an excellent group of accounting, just based upon the conversations I've had with people who've done business with them, very positive.
And Dana, from an engineer perspective, as you've looked at, what, as you reviewed the VA and gave these bids?
Yep, so in addition to the pre-qualification process, which is when they submitted their references, they submitted project experience of a similar dollar amount, and then a lot of the things that Chris just listed, we also had a conversation with them after the bids to just make sure that they've accounted for everything in the construction documents, make sure that there wasn't something, some big concern at that point. So we've reviewed the documents with them, we believe that they just did a very thorough job onsite investigating, they did participate in the mandatory pre-bid meeting and spent, I think, more than a day onsite, they were very thorough, so we were encouraged by that. But we, we believe that they have accounted for everything that was identified in the construction documents.
And not to go too far afield here, Dana and Chris, but in our pre-bid meeting, we had how many contractors attend? Do you, do you know offhand?
We had 30 attendees. There were multiples, though, so there were, there were different, multiple people from the same company. It also included some subcontractors, so it was abatement, it was about half and half, half abatement, half that were considering the general construction contract portion of it. So we had outstanding attendance at that pre-bid meeting. And we had eight bidders, but we actually had 10 that did meet the pre-qualifications and submit for the pre-qualification process, two just chose not to submit final bids.
Okay. An excellent process, Dana, an excellent process, I think to get that number of bidders and then to get it down to this level and get it down to a final bid. So if we, if we have checked all the boxes legally, we've checked all the boxes from the due diligence standpoint in vetting the low bid, I think, board, do you have any questions or comments?
I'm very pleased that in the contract documents, we did unit pricing.
Yes.
I mean, I'm very pleased about that, because that, that gives us a chance to control the cost at a, at a basic, basic level. I'm very happy with that.
Explain unit pricing.
Well, usually if a contractor was to demo or whatever, they would just give you a bid. Well now, if they go in and find something beyond or less than, it has to get paid by unit pricing.
Yeah, so we've solidified numbers for specific items that we believe there's potential quantity differences from what was outlined in the construction documents. And just because of the size of the project and the type of demolition with these existing buildings, these are all specific to abatement, they're just areas where we anticipate that they might open something up and find more than expected.
But it protects us, it protects us and the taxpayers from...
Exactly, right.
Yeah, it's not an unknown, I mean, we've established, we've established some fixed costs?
Exactly.
On these certain items, so that's...
Considering there's 16 of them, that's, it's...
We did try to be thorough, because it was more than that typical.
Yep, very good. Very good. So Jake, item four?
Yep.
Is that approval or...
I believe the item four would be the board's approval of the contract that will be proposed to be signed by the contractor that's being traded, the plan specifications, form of contract.
And then five is awarding the bid.
And number five is actually your consideration of the bid, that's my understanding.
Got it.
Right, so the contracts that she's, that they, Ethos has created and, and plans and specs.
Yeah, if any of you want to refuse that, it was here. So I would entertain a motion on item number four.
I have a question.
Oh, Steve.
We, if they, we award the bid, this is just hypothetical.
Yeah.
We award the bid, but then the financing doesn't come through, how are we, how do we...
There would be, there would be, so the point of saying, subject to financing?
Okay, so, okay.
The 12th finishes the process, or the 11th, I'm sorry, Jake. I don't know why I have the 12th in mind, I have the 12th in mind, but that finishes the process.
Yeah, just, but the contractor, contractor...
The contractor will be aware that it's subject to financing approval.
I'm just trying to...
Yep, no, that's a good question.
Okay.
So is there a motion on item number four, which is approval of the contract?
I make motion to approve the contract with, am I, with Veet, is that what I'm making the contract?
I believe, I don't want to overspeak, I believe this is the form, the form of language and the documents to be used.
The contract for the demolition project.
Yeah.
Not a word, not a word.
It's not a word, it's approving.
But we, I think what we're trying to do here is that we, we're happy with the contract and the process.
We're happy with the uni, we talked unit pricing, the structure, we're happy with the alternates, we're happy with how the form of the contract is played out. It protects us, it does a good job, I think they've done a good job mapping that out, so that's what it's for.
Okay, all right. I'll make the motion to, for approval of the project documents.
Second.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Very good. Item number five is awarding the bid subject to financing approval on May 11th. I'll get that right. Starting discussion.
I would like to just say thank you, Dana, for all your, your work and assistance in us. I was very pleased with it coming. I know that we had spoke in the very beginning, trying to get a ballpark figure and, you know, what this could look like for taxpayers. And your due diligence and being able to, I'm sure there's a lot of questions that were directed your way, so thank you for that, because this is definitely a huge, did you say that at one time, is this one of the biggest demo projects around?
Yeah, we believe this is the biggest demolition project the state has seen, and possibly the Midwest, yes.
Wow, okay, right. So yes, as you said earlier today, this is huge.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Steve?
I totally, totally agree with Keisha, Dana, thank you very much, appreciate everything done. Chris, you also been instrumental in this, everybody has, so I appreciate everybody, appreciate everybody's help, because like Keisha said, this is a huge, it's a, it's a huge step for Marion County, and a huge step for Knoxville.
Yes.
And hopefully one for the best. I mean, we weren't left with many choices, so we had to do something.
Yeah, very good. I'll talk a little bit more about the financial history when we get to the next items, but I think for now, I would entertain a motion to award the bid subject to financing approval to Veet and Company.
Yes, and after doing, after doing research and talking with Chris and everybody else, you know, I, you know, I, I had reservations at the beginning about the bid, because I was totally shocked that it coming way less than what we thought it was going to, so I will second that motion.
Motion in support, Jake?
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Very good, they just approved. Dana, will you be contacting them, or Chris? I assume they may be even online right now. I'll give Jason a call. Okay, very good, thank you, thank you. Next, we have items six and seven, we'll take them in order. Now we talk about the money to support the project. Resolution 21, 2021-46 is the resolution to authorize the issuance of, as we amended, 11 million dollars of obligations, general obligations to support this project. Jake, you want to give us a little background?
Well, okay, so this is, just to set the date for the public hearing, so to authorize that, and I, I think Michael's chomping at the bit there if he wants to jump on.
Yep.
Might be more than happy to have Michael take that over.
Absolutely, Michael, if you're online and want to add some color to this, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely, so both of these are starting the process to provide authority for the county to issue the related financing for the VA property demolition and related costs. So what we need to do with this is do two things. One, we need to identify the purpose of the project. I think you guys have covered that pretty clearly. Your bond attorneys at Ollers and Cooney have provided that for you in kind of the legal east there, related to the property within the VA urban renewal area. So that is the key, where it is and what work is being done. The second part of this, and we'll have more dialogue on this today, is you need to establish a not to exceed borrowing amount. This does not obligate even a dollar of borrowing by the county, but it provides the authority for you to borrow up to a certain amount. We'll finalize the sizing of the bonds once we have everything completed, but this authority is... is necessary for the county to then proceed with approving and awarding that bid at your meeting on May eleventh. You want to make sure you can pay for it before you start signing on the dotted line with the contractor. So that's why this process is moving the way it is, we need to establish the dollar amount, need to get the bids in, then we do the hearing process, and then you have the ability to issue the bonds at any subsequent date. I know we'll want to do that relatively efficiently. This sets the stage for your hearings on both items on May eleventh. So I'm going to just pause there real quick, Mark or any Board members, make sure that's clear what the process is here, the same process that we followed for the Prairie Ridge property last fall.
Yeah, no, Michael, I appreciate that, and, and the purpose of the amendment at the outset of this, amending to eleven million dollars, as Michael indicated, this is a not-to-exceed amount. So when we look at the total costs, and I did some math over the weekend and had some consultations with Michael as we worked through it, if you just round up six point seven million for the bid, not including alternates, with dump fees, Chris, I think we're estimating roughly about three million for dump fees, and then it leaves us about one point three million for any other contingencies. And I think that's a reasonable amount considering the size and scope of the project.
Yeah, yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, Chris, or Mark, because Chris and I have been having discussions about these fees too, so I understand why we went to the eleven million. Because we've been, Chris and I have been having discussions about the dump fees and, and, and I'm, and I want to make it perfectly clear, and I think, I think they already have, that eleven million doesn't mean we're going to spend eleven million.
Right, it's a not-to-exceed amount.
Not-to-exceed. Now hopefully we can get everything done for less than that, which will reduce the tax burden.
Absolutely, and, and Michael is, we'll talk about this in a minute, because I asked Michael to actually rework the tax estimates. Remember when we started this project, we did a lot of modeling, but our modeling was based on a twenty million dollar total when you combine the VA and Prairie Ridge. Well, it's pretty obvious now that we're seeing some of these costs and the projections with the bid award, subject to financing approval that we just did, we're going to come in under that, significantly under that. So I think that's, that speaks well the process, it speaks well the due diligence. Dana, your help and the help from Ethos, Chris, your due diligence work with your team, working this out to make sure that the taxpayers were getting the best bang for their buck. And our initial estimates are going to be under, well underneath that, that twenty million dollar aggregate total for these two projects. So let's take this in order here, we can talk more on item number seven, about this specifically in property taxes. Except for, Michael, is there anything else you want to add on item number six?
No, I just want to be clear that the reason for the two hearings was reviewed thoroughly with your bond attorneys at Allers and Cooney. You're not compounding these, we're stacking them just to be extra conservative, to make sure you've got authority on the meeting on the eleventh, so that you will be able to proceed with that really strong bid on the demolition work. So this is a belt and suspenders approach, I would say, just to make sure that there are, there are no surprises. So that's, that's the reason for two separate agenda items here, two separate hearings, just a, a, maybe a more thoughtful and conservative approach, which I think really ties into the county's approach here over the last two or three years.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, Michael. So item number six, Jake establishes the date for that hearing.
For the first hearing, for the ECPUR purpose.
That date will be?
May eleventh.
May eleventh?
Yep.
Very good. So is there...
And Mark, can I interrupt there? Did you guys already make an amendment then at the top of the agenda, if I'm, just to clarify, on that dollar amount? That's already been amended.
We did, we did do that, Michael. Yep, I amended that at the outset. So with that, is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-one dash forty-six, which would establish that date of May eleventh, to review this financing not-to-exceed amount?
Motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-one dash forty-six.
Second.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Good, that is approved. Next item, this is Resolution twenty-two-one dash forty-seven, and I think we had, this says fixing the date, Jake.
This is the same, the same thing for the, Michael, you want to jump in here if you want, but this is, had been amended to not-to-exceed the eleven million, but again, this is fixing a date for the public hearing on May eleventh, for having the essential county purpose as your authority to issue the bonds.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
I just got, I have one comment. I just want to make sure that the public understands that this is eleven thousand dollars, or eleven million dollars one time, not, not, this is eleven million this and then eleven another.
Right, right. What was the term you used, Michael, stacking?
Yes.
Yes, so this is not two eleven million dollar issues?
It's eleven million, that's it?
Yeah.
Correct.
Make motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-one forty-seven.
Second.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Good, thank you. And so Jake, we'll fix our date, May eleventh, where we'll final approve financing authority for this project.
I believe so.
We'll get ready with contracts on that day. Dana, are you going to come down and have signatures? How will we go through that process?
Typically, we will, we've already reviewed drafts with you, so we will update those with a couple minor comments that came through, and then we will send you the final copy, we will, Ethos signs a copy for authentication, and then we'll send it to the contractor to sign a copy, we will have it ready for you to sign at the May eleventh meeting.
Okay, very good, very good. Thank you Dana, look forward to that. And then, Michael, before we move on to item number eight, if you could, I know you, I had you rework the tax ramifications and tax implications of this, could you walk through that analysis pretty, at a high level?
Yeah, absolutely, and I, I know we've reviewed similar information over the last couple years with the Board, so I'm going to tie it back to that just for reference. We did a number of scenarios, as Mark mentioned, all the way up to a twenty million dollars, kind of between the VA property and Prairie Ridge. The tax impact on those, I think we really clarified by project. For the VA property, we had a range of project costs, and the high end of that was fifteen million, fifteen of that twenty million total. The impact on that was about thirty-five, thirty-four dollars per year on a residential taxpayer with a hundred thousand dollar assessment on their home. That was sort of our, our benchmark value for the Board to review and for the public. That was, that was sort of the max impact, if no development happens on either of those projects. We took a very conservative approach on those. So I think it's important to note that thirty-four dollars a year figure. When we ran this on the eleven million, and again, I think we're going to be a little bit less than eleven million of the authority that you just moved forward with, but ran it on the eleven million to be conservative, that was twenty-six dollars per year, so a good, a good market amount less. The number that I think was valuable in our prior discussions was what would that be per month? So again, this kind of conservative scenario, we're talking with these actual bids, two dollars and nineteen cents per month would be the impact to a residential taxpayer with a hundred thousand dollar assessment, so two dollars and nineteen cents per month.
So it's twenty-six, Michael, it's twenty-six dollars per year, per one hundred thousand?
That's right, correct.
Just, okay.
And that's if no value ever develops at the site, that's if the county does not realize any growth at all, once that site's cleared.
Right, those numbers will change if, as development takes place, I, I understand that.
They'll, they'll, they'll decrease significantly, correct. That's the shorthand there, just tying back to what we've talked through before. You know, we stayed conservative with those, those items. We'll be finalizing the financing in the coming month here with the Board, so we're within that kind of thirty-day period of having that become an actual number, but I, I, I know in our discussions, that's, that's a pretty favorable, getting down to that two dollars a month range for this project, I think is a testament how, how strong those bids are. I, I do want to mention that to the, to the team there as well. I, I see a lot of projects around the Midwest and around the state, we're struggling getting good bids, so to see that many bidders and that many bids, pretty exciting, and, and I just want to make sure that was my two cents from the peanut gallery, I guess, here as well.
Appreciate it, Michael, and appreciate all the work and effort you put into helping us guide, guide through this process from a financial standpoint.
Absolutely.
Definitely could not have done it without you, so thank you.
Thanks. Jake, I'll follow up after the meeting with you and Steve to get the hearing notice published, all right, sir?
Okay, thank you.
Very good, thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you. Item number eight is a... We have a FY twenty-one twenty-two suspension of property tax request, and who's this? Michaela?
That's me, that's the Treasurer's Office. A little, little bit anti-splat. So every year, I come to the Board for approval on behalf of any taxpayer that qualifies through DHS and desires to have their property taxes suspended. In my time in the Treasurer's Office, we've only had one resident pursue that option, and it's the parcel indicated in the packet. I've done the legwork, gone to the DHS, which we are required to do annually per code, to make sure that this resident continues to qualify for suspension of their property taxes. Once that's determined, then it's up to the Board to approve that, you really don't have a choice, but it gives you an opportunity to make sure that, you know, I'm doing my job correctly. As the guy who bills taxes, obviously I need your approval to write them off. So I think it's always important to note, when I present this, that a suspension of property taxes does not mean that they've been forgiven or abated. It just means that they are suspended until an ownership change of that property takes place in the future, at which point, all of those back taxes become due.
We've done several of these in the past.
Yes, for this particular parcel, I think since two thousand and four, they have continued to request those taxes suspended every year.
That makes that a very unattractive parcel for a future buyer, doesn't it?
It could potentially. I know there are other Treasurer's Offices that have several properties that they go through this with every year, and some of those properties have ended up upside down.
And there's no, and there's no time limit, Michaela, where if you apply for this, I think, I mean, this has been every year since I've been on the Board. I mean, is there a point where you say that you can't keep applying for the same?
As long as DHS determines that this property owner continues to qualify, then they are able to continue to pursue that option, so yes.
My favorite group, yeah.
Could we just, you know, build up for the difference, I guess?
Try to not be political. We have guests. All right, very good. Michaela, thank you, thank you very much for bringing it. Board, any discussion?
Thank you though, for bringing it to us.
There's no discussion, we entertain a motion on this request.
Motion to approve the property tax suspension request.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Michaela, thank you. Next, we have Resolution twenty-two-one dash forty-four. Transfer of local option sales tax loss funds to the debt servicing, Jake?
I was hoping Michaela would...
Just keep going with it?
Yeah, just go with Michaela. All right. This is a combination effort between our office and the Treasurer's Office. This is again, an annual event that's been going on since the Law Enforcement Center was built. Every year I say that it was not required by the ballot language that the Board transferred three hundred thousand dollars from its local option sales tax collections to the debt service to reduce the debt levy burden onto the taxpayers, but it was something that was discussed at the time and all Boards since have continued to maintain that. So what it, it's, it's three hundred thousand dollars from local option sales tax that goes into the debt service to pay the principal and interest on the Law Enforcement Center, the bonds. So that reduces the debt service or the debt levy to each taxpayer. There's only a couple years left of the, and the Law Enforcement Center will be paid off, and then this, we won't be bringing this to you, but until something different or you indicate you don't want to do it anymore, we'll be bringing this to you a couple years. And we, the Treasurer and I are not allowed to transfer funds, the Auditor's Office and the Treasurer's Office are not allowed to transfer funds within county, because they're designated for specific purposes without the Board's authority, and that's why we bring it to you each year.
Very good, thank you Jake. Board, any discussion on this? Something we have talked about during our budget hearings and everything else that we've done.
It also has to be included in your budget each year, and it was, and just because it's included in a budget doesn't mean you have to do it, and it's included in next year's as well. Again, the budget process has to be there, and then this process has to be there.
I mean, we've looked at, over the years, a variety of options, bringing the debt up early, it doesn't make a lot of sense, given the cost of bonds and what they will be financed at. Michael would even look at that formally as we look at these projects. We're just not saving that much money at all by, by early repayment, so... Is there a motion on this resolution?
I'm going to approve Resolution twenty-two-one dash forty-four.
A second.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Item number ten, Resolution twenty-two-one dash thirty-nine, which is authorizing our employee benefit plans. Please sit.
I'm going to stand, since I can't see...
That's fine.
Is that all right?
That's fine.
And I'm so short, so... I'll do this. So you have before you a resolution for the health insurance benefits, and as we've said in past meetings, you know, our insur, our health insurance did take a, take a pretty significant hit this year, a ten percent increase. I'm, I get a monthly report on our health insurance, our usage, and it's not getting better, so, you know, we have to think of different ways to save some money. So a couple things I just want to point out, that I, I've looked back through the years to the beginning of time when Jake and I were here, when we had, single policy was two hundred dollars a month and a family plan was four hundred. Along the way, the Board has always maintained options for the employees to have choices. You know, when we would make different changes, they would have a choice. You could buy up a plan, you know, we're going to change from five hundred to seven fifty, we gave you the option, you increased your premiums, okay? We've, the county has looked at several different options, you know, you can increase the co-pays, the deductibles, we can put a surcharge on if, you know, your spouse has coverage somewhere else, and we've looked at all that, and, and this Board is pretty set on, we don't want to do those things. We really like what we have. So I worked with Cindy Henninger, with Holmes Murphy, and we came up with a new strategy for the premiums. What this does is, this would set the HMO as a preferred plan for Marion County, and we would propose that we keep the funding for the HMO the same that we always have. So the county would pay ninety-five percent of the single and seventy-seven percent of the family, so the HMO would become the preferred plan. We are not, my proposal is to not take away the PPO, however, to change the funding of the PPO. Cindy and I worked on that, and we believe a fair change would be the county to pay ninety percent of the single fee on the PPO plan for singles and seventy-five for the family. We also took, took a look at the hydropotable plan, how can we make that more attractive for people to, to incent them to the hydropotable health plan? So you will see that the hydropotable health plan, the single plan, we're proposing that an employee-only plan, they don't pay the premium at all. And then the family plan, the, the premium would be one hundred and sixty-six dollars and ninety-five cents a month. Doing some of the math... Doing some of the math, if, if you are a fam, you know, those, on the PPO, I'm one of them, that is very strong on the PPO plan, and I like my PPO plan, but I did some number crunching, and if I took today's price, even with the increase, and I switched my family plan to the HMO, I'm still going to, I'm going to save six dollars and sixty-seven cents a month, just on the premiums. Not to mention that there's some extra benefits on the HMO that the PPO doesn't offer, eye, eye exams, okay? If I am a family and I choose the high deductible health plan, I can save a hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents a month just on premiums. That's over two thousand dollars a year. So you can shift some of those dollars that you're paying in, paying in premiums and switch those dollars into your HSA to save for those deductibles, so. That's a thought process that we put forth together. The dental plan did see just a slight increase, I think it was point zero two percent, and then the vision, obviously, that one didn't change, we're in a rate lock guarantee, so. Kind of the concept that we went with, if you have any comments? It actually, I didn't give you the percentage for the high deductible health plan, the single plan, the county would pay a hundred percent, and the family plan, the county would pay eighty-seven point one six percent, so quite a bit more than the ninety-five and seventy-seven split, so.
And what, what's our county contribution to HSAs?
The HSA, then I propose that we stay the same at one twenty-five a month, so fifteen hundred a year. So this is, this savings is on top of what you're already contributing to the HSA. Any questions?
Very good. Steve, Keisha? Want to digest? When do we have to have this approved? You wanted it today, didn't you?
I do, I really do need it today. We do need to get it on our open enrollment process.
It is almost May, isn't it?
Yeah, next week is May, and we need everything, everybody's decisions done, because we have to start entering in systems and to, to get everything ready by July first.
Well, I, I mean, high level, again, I'm a little biased, I've been in this industry a long time, can we go back to that? Thank you. Took away my talking points, man. But I, I'm very happy that we're trying to find ways to continue to offer the variety of plans that we've had in the past. That's good, considering the cost increases we've incurred over the last year, and that trend doesn't look that slowing down. So you know this, board, from our budget meetings, our biggest expense is salary and benefits, obviously, and we still want to provide our employees with what we consider to be a top-flight benefit plan. That is a highly competitive plan, and I believe that this is, if you were to look at it compared to other employers in Marion County, I think this would, would still be highly competitive. And very excited about the HSA plan. Again, I'm a little biased toward that, I've had one since it first came out, I think it's a great option for people to consider, and the, the county contribution sure to raise some of that cost to that plan, if you can manage your healthcare costs differently.
And remind, on the HSA that covers, like, you know, if you wanted an annual exam, is that correct? Are those types of things?
On the high deductible health plan, on all the plans, the ACA requires that your annual physical is covered, so that, your annual physical wouldn't even, you wouldn't even need your HSA money for it.
It doesn't require-
It still is covered, yeah, even on the high deductible plan, it's covered.
Okay.
But some of those people that have a flexible spending account, you know, if you're maxing out your flexible spending account at two thousand seven hundred and fifty, you move from a PPO plan to a high deductible health plan, that's another two thousand. You're at four thousand seven fifty without even the county's contribution, so to get to the seven thousand high deductible base is a lot easier with the premium being low and switching some of your, your dollars. So if people have questions, please call me, I'm not the expert on it, if I can't answer it, we'll get to you with Holmes Murphy.
But we're, we're, we're attempting to give the employees options and ways to manage that.
Exactly, you will not find a high deductible health plan, I, I challenge you to find a high deductible health plan with a seven thousand dollar deductible, and your premium is only a hundred and sixty-six ninety-five a month.
Right.
Because normally, your, your premiums are way higher than that.
And your deductible, I can tell you what mine is, Steve, it's thirteen thousand.
Per family, yep. So just, just kind of helping get you to the point where, you know, I know it's scary, it's scary for me, I get it, but if, if you take a look at it, look at what you're paying in premiums, you can go on Wellmark, and look at what you actually spent between your premiums and your costs, and check it out, you'd be shocked, isn't it?
And that is something that-
Everybody can do on their own, they can log into Wellmark on their own and look at what their claims, what they actually paid last year. You'd, you'd be surprised. Any other questions?
Steve, Keisha, any other questions for Lisa?
No, I understand what we're trying to do.
I like the, the, I mean, really three boxes, provide our employees with the options we've been providing, manage our costs, and help our employees to manage their costs through the HSA plan and other options, at least giving people that option to go to them if they want to, so.
Unfortunately, it's a sign of the times, but everybody in the same boat.
Unfortunately, and we have had, I mean, this, the, the highest increase that we've had in the past was a six. I, I mean, back to the beginning of time, twenty years, I mean, we have just not, we've been very, very, very lucky with our health insurance group. We've had years where our, our increase is zero, but it just, we've hit a time, we knew it was coming, and here it is, so we've, we've just got to do something different.
Lisa, thank you. There's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion on this resolution.
Motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-nine.
I'll second that. I got my second ticket, one, one minute.
Johnner? McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Meeting will now move into closed session. Is there a motion to close open session?
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Very good. Take a five-minute break, and then we'll go into closed session.
April twenty-seventh, back in open session.
Very good, a motion to reconvene, Lisa, open session, sorry.
Reconvene, open session.
Second.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
No action taken in the closed session. This conducted, positive comments were made, and we will move on. Updates, Mr. McCombs?
I have a feeder-think watershed meeting tomorrow, but it's a good order here. Chris and I, Chris and I have some very interesting conversations the last couple of days, and there's some things that we're going to approach, I really don't want to get into detail on, about may, how, how we can reduce some of these overall costs of the demolition. I have to meet with some people here probably this week, hopefully it will be a positive outcome.
Okay. As cryptic as that was, we'll leave there. Mrs. Johnner?
Tomorrow, I've got judicial, last night I had pellet planning and zoning, for you, those of you that maybe have not seen it, but they're going to be getting a smash park in Pelham, so, yeah. Approved the final plan for Prairie Ridge, so things are moving along very well there. Twenty-one homes that I've, on the committee that approved, and four lots, four extra lots have been sold, so.
Very good.
Yep.
Very good, well, we've got a rating call right after this meeting, Jake and I do with Michael, for bonds in the VA project, and then for health is today, four thirty, I think something like that, so it's a meeting day. Now, we'll be calling up with the city of Knoxville on the associated agreements regarding the twenty-eight E and those things regulated with the VA, so that will continue to move forward. We have a lot of bills that have come in from Kelly to look at, review, I've made a lot of comments to her, there's one in play right now, really, I'm working on getting some comments back to her, and in addition to the RIF money that we want to try to secure, so a lot of things going on from a legislative standpoint as well. That's all I've got, anything else for the good of the order?
May I give a comment or an update? Is that, is that legal? Mike Nardini called, and they are working on their final applications, Prairie Ridge, make me think of it, on Prairie Ridge, from the developers, so Mike is in reviewing all the invoices and the request for the, the payment per the agreement with the city vigorously and intensely, along with their counsel from Allers, and I think engineer from Vayster and Kim as well, so that will be coming your direction, potentially for, for the May eleventh claims, so it will be the large reimbursement claim back to, I'm not sure if it's going to the city or to the developer, I, I don't recall exactly per the agreements, but Mike, wanted you to, wanted the county to know that they're working on that, looking to have that stuff here. There's a lot of documentation, he wondered what we wanted, I think he's going to include a spreadsheet, a cover letter, certified letter, saying these are the expenses, I think the agreement says that that would go through the pellet and if pellet accepted, that we were good with it, if you guys want, and they're, and maybe electronic file as well, if you ever want to see anything or have questions on that, make sure you let him know, or call me and I'll route, route you to Mike or whatever, but just wanted you to know that was coming, and if you want to see anything, holler.
Excellent.
Yeah, I'd also say the smash park is going right next to where it's out there in the development area, so it's on the commercial ground, no?
Excellent, very good, Jake, thank you, good update, appreciate it. If there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
We are adjourned, thank you.